A moment of silence for Leonard Michaels, who is a former councilman who recently passed.
Roll call. Toth?
Here.
Obidorf?
Yeah.
Echol?
Here.
Marquette?
Here.
Bruce?
Heben?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Motion to excuse Mr. Roos.
Second.
All those in favor of excusing Mr. Roos, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the July 11th regular council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from July the 11th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, any additions to the agenda for today?
Safety and Public Works.
To Public Works, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, committee reports. Mr. Obidorf, Recreation?
Thank you, Ms. Echol. Board of Minute, Board Meeting Minutes, Rosford Parks Recreation Committee for 5:922. In attendance, Toby Ledesma, Caroline Zuckowski-Echol, myself, Dan Welburn, Dan, Don Burks, and Brenna Reynolds. Me and called the order at 5:15 PM, polling location. The Recreation Center was polling location for the City of Rosford for the vote on August the 2nd. The Recreation Center was closed down for the event, but still offered seniors lunches and day camp. There was no issues for the event. Recreation software, Mr. Ledesma showed the board a demonstration of REC Dex. The Recreation Center is working on implementing REC Dex as a new software system for the Recreation Center and IT Department. Software will allow for online payments for memberships, rentals, programs. It will also serve as a membership check-in system for the REC Center. The system should be up and running by mid-August. Riverfest. The Recreation Department is working on the plans for Riverfest Festival, which will take place on August the 20th. Fireworks will take place at 10:00 PM. Recreation Department will have a bounce house on the infield and offer laser tag in the multipurpose courts. Halloween Parade, plans are ongoing for the Halloween Parade, and a committee met for a second time on July 2nd. The parade will be on October the 30th at 2:00 PM, and there is another meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the Recreation Center for the Halloween Committee. Wood County Park Grants. Recreation Department is planning on applying for park grants from the Wood County Parks District. The board looked at a few different options and would like to have the Recreation Department look into a connecting path between the pickleball court's post office and John Folcheck Park. Eagle Scout Project. Jake Van Horn completed his Eagle Scout Project at the bottom of John Folcheck Park, and he sanded and painted the pavilion and power washed the concrete. Looks very nice. Cedar Creek Church Service Event. The Recreation Department and Cedar Creek Church are partnering on a community service project on July the 23rd. Volunteers will be picking up veteran memorial, picking up veteran Memorial Park and Islandview Park. Programs. Little League Football Deadline was on July the 1st, and they have enough for one team in each age group. Little League Cheerleading Deadline is on July the 15th. Facility Rentals. Mr. Ledesma showed that, showed the board the current rates for facility rentals within the Recreation Center and at the parks. He recommended looking at a small increase in rates as it has been done, as it not been done for at least five years. They will look to continue discussions at the next meeting. Meeting is adjourned at 5:50 PM tonight, and we have another meeting tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Obidorf?
Just about the check-in, um, system that you're gonna be implementing. Is that going to alleviate an employee having to sit there and check people in? Something they just do on a monitor or?
My understanding is it's going to be on a monitor, it's going to be on a monitor system. You know, like when you go into like Holiday Park or one of those other places, or YMCA, it'll be one of those systems.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Public Works, Mr. Toth?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Echol. Uh, Public Works Committee Meeting, we met July 7th, 2022, at 3:30 PM. In attendance were Ms. Murray, Ms. Reynolds, Mr. Coe, Mr. Audet, Mr. Toth. The meeting began with Cory and Chris from Local 33 to answer questions we had about the resolution pertaining to the indoor air quality. After questions were asked and answered, it was agreed that the resolution would be tabled at this time. Mr. Audet gave us updates on the roundabout at Crossroads. Construction had started, and with the weather permitting, it might take less than the estimated 90 to 120 days. He also updated us on the demolition on the Eagle Point Elementary Building. They had begun remediation, which was to take two weeks, and the building should be totally down sometime in August. Mr. Audet also spoke of the sinkhole at the end of Eagle Point Road. The sinkhole may have been caused by improperly bedded pipe and the failure of the subgrade. As an emergency stone was to be ordered to fill the hole for the time being. The Vets Park Concession Stand restroom facilities, we are expecting to receive bids in August. The restrooms on the top of the hill are to be torn down. At this meeting, we discussed the lot next to Billy V's that is up for sale and decided to add an ordinance on making an offer for said lot. That meeting adjourned at 4:20 PM.
Any questions?
Okay, the Public Works Committee Meeting met on August 5th, 2022. We met at, at AP, uh, excuse me, 9:00 AM. In attendance were Ms. Zuckowski-Echol, Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Murray, Mr. Audet, and Mr. Toth. At this meeting, Mr. Audet went over the status of properties that are in process of or scheduled for demolition. The restroom facility at Vets Park has been 100% demoed. Eagle Point Elementary is 60% complete, and the structure at 7800 Wales Road that is used for fire training is scheduled for demo on September 1st. The parking lot the city purchased from Dogs, which will be ID'd as City Lot 1, is in the process of design being worked on. When complete, it will accommodate 14 spaces for vehicles. The roundabout at Crossroads is approximately 50% complete, with paving to begin soon. Crossroads Traffic Impact Study and Access Management Policy Update is complete. The US-20 Mobility Study is ongoing. Developments at the Crossroads Giant Tri, uh, Golden Triangle area are also moving along. The big lots lease renovation is underway. Murphy Tractor is underway, and Whiteford Kenworth has secured site plans with a fall 2022 plan for groundbreaking. Scanelle Panatoni, not Panasonic, development has, Scanelle completing work on its first structure with the second structure on its way. Panatoni is underway with their site plan. We discussed the streets that are scheduled for replacement or repair of pavement and/or drainage, with Eleanor Helen Central and Hillville slated for 2022. Elm Tree East, Maryland Drive, Rinker Court, and Windsor Drive set for 2023. Jennings, Hillcrest, and Riverside to be done in 2023, 24. The Eagle Point Sinkhole is in the first phase of slope stabilization. The meeting adjourned at 10:26 AM.
Any questions?
Question?
All right, seeing none. Public Safety. Public, Public Safety Committee Meeting met on Wednesday, July 20th at 4:30 PM. In attendance were Caroline Zuckowski-Echol, Chris Heben, Allison Murray, Todd Kitzler, and Josh Dreward. Police Department. There will be a complete total solar eclipse on 4/8/24. 18:06 is the last time that it happened, and 80/90 and I-75 is the prime viewing location, and is predicted to be a major stopping and watching point. The Wood County Emergency Management is encouraging all of Wood County to be prepared. They are estimating the population of Wood County will at least double in size that day, but could see crowds that will quadruple in size. They are recommending that extra vehicles be on patrol. Everyone fill up their tanks prior to gas stations, may experience unprecedented demand that day. They would also recommend that we plan events to direct crowds to set observation areas with food trucks and activities so that they stay longer than 10 minutes of the eclipse to spread out the rate of traffic coming and going. They recommend and start, they recommend starting to plan where to funnel crowds efficiently and safely. The community discussed the race for recovery in October and options for changing the route from the Colony location. We are down one officer with one retirement coming in September. The current civil service test closes at the end of July, so in August, there will be a new test available to work off of. The Sergeant's Test is on Monday. Chief Kitzler could have a new sergeant by the end of July. The data master is being phased out in 2024. New shields were ordered. The chief and city administrator are looking into a new scheduling software. The police department will convert over to it to work the bugs out. If all goes well, the city administrator will switch all departments over to it. There is a meeting scheduled with CSX regarding the trains blocking the roads for long periods of time. Committee discussed the option of adding blinking lights to those, like those used on Woodville Road for the Pickle Road Crossing. There continues to be an issue with large trucks trying to turn around on Ironwood when the tracks are blocked. There is no room in the subdivision for them to do the safety. The committee discussed ways for keeping this from happening. Chief Kitzler met with the schools on active shooter situation preparation and training. He is trying to tighten the protocol to make sure that nothing is missed. There will be an active shooter drill take place with the school staff, police department, and the fire department in the near future. There are currently 18 applications for the Citizens Police Academy. The chief would be going to stroll the streets to try to create interest and find a few more applicants. Fire Department. There are lots of holes in the schedule for July. This was a result of vacations and three employees out with COVID. There was one day when there were six calls within four hours, and mutual aid had to be called in. Two applications have been submitted from potential hires. The August schedule came out and is completely full. Grant update. The AFG and Safer Grant awards have been delayed until August 1st. They will be dispersed by December 30th. Next meeting is scheduled for September 21st at 4:30 PM in council chambers. Any questions?
I have a question, but I want to go back to cover four, Brad Christian.
Oh, okay, sure.
Um, and this is more for you three. When we develop a sinkhole like that, uh, and the people that perform the work, they put up a performance bond, correct? Does the performance bond come?
This was like 50, 60 years ago when it was first, when it was constructed, so.
Oh, this is an older one? It's not the newer part of, okay, okay, my apologies then. For another time.
Kevin used to play on that.
Greg was there before me. It's by the cemetery. It was the one by the cemetery.
That was not part of that new, that we just got done doing though.
Okay, any other questions? Um, reports of the mayor and administrator. Allison?
I am going to give my time to Mr. Morrison today.
So council, um, we have two things the administration is going to present to you. We'd ask your consideration of. The first deals with an encroachment, a request on the sidewalk, um, in front of Danny's bar, and then the second one deals with a mural on the side of that, that bar. As Allison said, um, there, uh, it's my understanding that somebody is in the process of purchasing Danny's bar, and he's sitting in the corner back there, so if he has any questions when, when we're done, you can certainly answer them. Um, and, and some of his plans deal with putting, uh, outside seating in the front on the sidewalk. Under our code and the charter, council controls the city right of way, so that would be in the city right of way, and it would be council's decision whether or not to allow that encroachment. Council has done it before with a couple other establishments in the past. So, um, if council chooses to do that, what we would suggest is that the council allow the encroachment, um, but subject to administrative approval, the city engineer, the zoning inspector, and, and Allison to make sure that everything is safe, that we don't have any issues with pedestrians back and forth, you know, things aren't obstructed. So, the first thing we'd like you to consider is to allow that encroachment on the city sidewalk, uh, or the city right of way, subject to administrative approval.
Mr. Marquette?
I remember we went through this with Billy V's a couple years ago, and the biggest issue was accessibility for handicap, being able to utilize the sidewalk. And there will be enough space for that?
That would be up to, um, Mark and.
That would be my only concern, is that?
Yeah, we, Greg, we got, it's 15 feet of city walkout in front of the, you know, the facility. We're, right now, drawn up maybe about seven feet of that to be.
There'll be plenty of that.
Yeah, you know, we're just gonna do, you know, canopy with a nice wrought iron fence. We'd like to replace the concrete with like a poured and stamped concrete that the city would be on. You know, we want to do that all the way around the building, but, um, there's gonna be a couple whiskey barrel tables, tabletops. We're gonna do like a canopy. There'll be some TVs, you know, misting fan and stuff, maybe some flower, you know, something nice. But the way I figured, if I can get seven, maybe eight feet, at least seven or eight feet for, you know, because typically 88 is 44 inches, so that would give us 88 inches both ways for, you know, that accessibility. That's just kind of my, uh, viewpoint right now.
Thank you.
So are you looking for a motion to accept that, or?
Yeah, you had your hand up.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna make, I was gonna ask you, do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, motion to?
Allow the encroachment subject to administrative approval?
Motion to allow the encroachment subject to administrative approval.
Second.
Vote on the motion to allow encroachment, uh, on the, of the sidewalk in front of Danny's, subject to administrative approval. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Thank you, and then the second and last thing dealing with this project, um, there's a request, so under our code, um, there's a request for a mural on the side of the building, uh, the side that faces Toledo, and under our code, wall mural, wall murals are allowed, but they require permission of city council. So Allison's gonna pull up some pictures and... And I think Brad can maybe explain this if council has any questions, but again, that will be the side of the building facing Toledo. Looks better than what's there now.
Yeah, it looks nice.
Really, you know, just to, maybe I should keep my mouth shut, but I've been working with Knorr's quite a bit, and they've been wonderful. They're pretty happy about the potential here, kind of giving things back to where they should be. And it was a horse stable originally before it opened us mikes in 1934, so we kind of wanted to really focus on bringing that back to history. And, um, you know, we wanted to make it look like horses were getting close out there. You know, Dean just did, uh, my buddy's wanted a mural down, on the silos, so he's pretty excited about, you know, this opportunity. More about historical thing than anything is maintaining that, pretty beat history. I learned a lot this weekend, we're giving a lot of pictures, and it's pretty interesting stuff, but that's kind of our motive there. If Dean does great work, it certainly will look very nice. We don't, certainly don't want anything that's gonna look poor over there. I've seen some really bad murals before, but he's a pretty amazing guy. It pretty much looks like it comes out of a printer when he's done. So those are just some rough drafts. I mean, the one we kind of like now actually has the sunset behind it. We were trying to match the sky a little bit, you know, at some point, but it's kind of a thought as to break some history back.
Kevin, you said this is permissible in their code?
With council.
With the exception of?
With council's approval.
With council's approval.
You, you have to approve the, any mural that's erected in the city.
So he can put any, he can put a mural up, but we have to accept that mural, and we could go on until we accept them when that we want to accept.
You could, yes. Or you could just grant authority for the mural, and then you wouldn't have, if they granted authority, you wouldn't have a problem submitting the plans, I take it?
We'll submit everything. We want you to be happy with it before we do anything like that.
I would like to see the final mural before it went up.
Okay, maybe we could do is have a, have a, a vote on a motion to approve the mural subject to council's final approval.
Of the artwork.
There you go, of the artwork.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Vote on the motion to approve the mural subject to council's approval of the final artwork. Artwork. Echol?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye. Anything else, Mr. Morrison?
Thanks, appreciate it.
Nope, thank you.
Uh, real quick.
Oh, Mr. Heben?
Real quick, Mr. Morrison, I, I just wanted to say from a, from a standpoint of revitalizing our downtown, uh, I'm extremely excited that you've decided to invest in the city of Rosford. I'm looking forward to the final masterpiece, so thank you so much. Welcome to Rosford.
Thanks, appreciate it. Thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Murray?
Uh, just very quickly, uh, the northbound I-75 ramp to Miami Street and the Miami Street to now northbound I-75 ramps are scheduled to be closed August 15th, and they'll be closed for 75 days. So we're talking about everything on the east side of the expressway. So there will be detours. The northbound I-75 to Miami Street detour, you take northbound I-75 and you go one exit up to Collingwood. You come down, back down Erie, and southbound I-75, and you'd exit at 199 Miami Street. And for Miami Street to northbound I-75, you'll take southbound I-75 down to Wales Road and then come up around. So, um, these will be posted on our Facebook page, and I will forward them to you guys in case you get calls.
Thank you.
So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any correspondence, Mr. Watcher?
Yes, I have a couple. First is a request from Tarhar Rosford LLC, Doing Businesses, the Rosford Carryout, Farmer Stop and Shop, for a new permit for a C1 and C2, which is carryout only. And then for a transfer from Global Partners of Ohio, DP, Doing Businesses, GP Marks, for a transfer of their D1 permit, which allows sale of, uh, for carryout until 1:00 AM. Caroline?
Mr. Heben?
I, I didn't underst, what's, what's carryout only mean, the first part of that?
You can't drink on the premises.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Marquette?
So, uh, this has changed hands. Is the new owner, are they an individual, or are they a corporation, or, or they just changed the name, or?
Um, I have no idea.
Chief Kitzler, go ahead.
Information is just. It's an individual, I, I signed it last week.
So a new owner?
Chief Kitzler's okay with it, I think I'm okay with it.
Okay. Do you have any issues with it?
No?
No.
Why is that?
No issues.
Oh, no issues, okay, I'm sorry.
No issues?
We don't, as long as council doesn't object, they don't, you don't want to hear him, I'll send it in. Uh, the other one is a reminder, I told you back in July about, uh, if there was anyone interested in being nominated for a seat on the Northwestern Water and Sewer District Board, um, you have to submit the nominations by August the 15th. I haven't heard any names, so.
Is there a Rosford representative right now?
No, because Billy, Billy resigned.
Right.
So right now, the municipal-appointed board member is a gentleman named Chuck Latta, whose term will expire at the end of this year.
Are we able to put that on our social media page as well?
We can. Good idea.
Sorry, I should have raised my hand, I apologize.
That's okay. Anything else, Mr. Watcher?
Nope, that's it.
Introduction of ordinances. Can I have a motion to read ordinance 2022-36 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? 2022-36 is an ordinance opting out of House Bill 172 and reaffirming the ban on discharging, igniting, or exploding fireworks in the city of Rosford, declaring an emergency. This is the second reading.
Leave this as second reading? Go ahead, Mrs.
Has anyone received any feedback from the community?
I haven't received nothing.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything.
Just on that little Facebook poll I put on Rosford information and grain spotting, I mean, but that's... I mean, I, I, two or three people, but, you know, they're, why would we go against, you know, the state? That's the only thing I've gotten.
Okay.
Mr. Marquette?
Yeah, we, we just went through the 4th of July, when it was legal for them to do whatever they wanted, and there was not a issue, um...
Just your normal, the average calls, nothing different. You have complaints.
That's passes. Yeah. So I, I don't have a problem supporting, or, wait, how do you read this now?
Yeah.
Do we be?
So are we voting no to this?
Correct.
Okay.
So we'd be voting against it?
If, yes.
I have no problem voting against this.
I agree, I don't have a problem voting against it either.
Either do I.
Motion to suspend the third reading.
Second. Does anyone in the audience have any comments about this ordinance?
Erin Crawford, 544 Brunns Drive. Um, I really wish you would wait for a third reading, because I know, I've talked to several of my neighbors, and they are, uh, pro-ban, because, uh, many years back, we did have that old greenhouse behind our, um, properties catch up in fire on the 4th of July. I actually was the one that called 911, and, uh, we had to be evacuated throughout a good portion of the night, um, due to propane tanks at the back end of the properties. Again, this year, we did have new neighbors who were unaware of that setting off fireworks very close to the same area and very close to my house and my next-door neighbor's house. And we feel that although we don't have an issue with people out in fields, it should be a certain distance away from flammable sub, uh, structures and not just spectators. The state law, I think, says it has to be, spectators have to be a certain distance away, but I believe it should also be, uh, certain distance from buildings, especially residences. So I wish you would wait for a third reading so that, um, we can write letters into council and express our opinions.
Mr. Obidorf?
I would think when a citizen comes forth like you have and says that there would be red letters coming in, that there's no real reason why we couldn't go a third reading.
I'll retract my motion.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to read ordinance 2022-39 by title?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-39 is an ordinance authorizing the administration to dispose of certain surplus property not needed for any municipal purpose and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
We don't need it, that's not, we're not in a hurry.
Okay. What, what are we disposing of?
Uh, some fire equipment.
Okay.
Do we need to wait on it?
Tyler, or, I guess Josh isn't here, so.
I mean, I'll, I'll move, I'll move to suspend the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience who has anything to comment about this ordinance? Seeing none, Mr. Watcher?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare ordinance 2022-39 an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to adopt ordinance 2022-39.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obidorf?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Okay, can we have a motion to read 2022-40 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? 2022-40 is an ordinance for transfer of funds for the year beginning January 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2022. First reading.
Mr. Heben?
We reviewed this in Finance Committee. Allison, can you go over real quick just what this first one is?
Yes, the first one is the transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement fund of $75,000, which would cover the purchase of the downtown parcel and also the safety shields for the police department.
To be passed tonight?
Um, yeah, we, we should have it tonight.
Move to suspend the second and third reading.
Second.
Any comments from the audience about suspending the second and third reading of this ordinance? Nope.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to adopt ordinance 2022-40.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt the ordinance. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-41 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-41 is an ordinance amending Supplementing Number Four, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2022, passed by ordinance 2021-78. This is the first reading.
Allison?
Uh, whenever we add anything that we want to purchase and expend money on that was not in the original budget, then we do an appropriation to move the money over. So, in this, sorry, in this appropriation, we have the purchase of the downtown parcel, the police safety shields. We have the purchase of the buyout of the lease of a 2018 backhoe. We have the purchase of 155 Superior Street, and then we also, or I'm sorry, 313 Beach Street.
Move to suspend the second and third reading of ordinance 2022-41.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment on this ordinance?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
For adoption of ordinance 2022-41, second.
Vote on the motion to adopt the ordinance. Obendorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-42 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-42 is an ordinance certifying to the county auditor an assessment and lean upon certain property in the city of Rosford pursuant to Rosford Municipal Code, Section 1327.07, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Go ahead, Mr. Oberdorff.
Kevin, what's the normal procedure that this goes through before it comes down our desolate today?
I think what happens is, uh, the property owners first notified that they have to abate the nuisance. If they don't abate the nuisance, then I think Mark gives them a second notice. And then, if they don't do it that ti- at that time, then the city abates the nuisance, and then we get the bill. We send the property owner the bill and say, "You have to pay this."
They have ample time.
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Kevin.
Any other comments? Can we let this go another reading, or would you like to pass it tonight?
It has to be at the county auditor by the second Monday in September, which is our next meeting, so.
Move to suspend the second and third reading of ordinance 2022-42.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment on this ordinance?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare 2022-42 an emergency measure. Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption. Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-42. Obendorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to read ordinance 2022-43 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-43, an ordinance under Section 727.25, Ohio Revised Code, assessing upon the lots and lands within the city of Rosford to pay the expense of lighting the streets, alleyways, and other public places in said city, and furnishing electrical energy, therefore directing the clerk to certify said assessment to the county auditor to be placed upon the tax duplicate and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
This one we have until the beginning of October, so it can go a second reading.
First reading. Can I have a motion to read ordinance 2022-44 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-44 is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the Wood County Commissioners for the purpose of roadway improvements to Lime City Road and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Mr. Adet, you want to explain what these improvements will be?
Yeah, so, um, Lime City is under the long-range plan to make improvements, but to get there, which is gonna be about five or six years, with the Corps of Engineers to move the ditches and widen and buy right-of-way. This project does pavement repair between 795 and the roundabout right there by Pena County, um, full-depth pavement repaired areas that are collapsing, and they're gonna do a leveling course and a surface course for that whole section of road, and they'll do it this fall. It was a collaboration between the county engineer and the city of Rosford. Both the county engineer and I worked on it.
Okay. Would you like this passed, uh, tonight?
Yes.
Move to suspend the second and third-
Mr. Marquette?
Pardon me?
Isn't, uh, is the township part of that stretch?
I'm not sure if township is-
Isn't, isn't Cedar Creek in, in the township?
I'd have to go back and look at the map.
Yes.
So, I don't see them contributing here.
The county pays for the township.
Yeah, the county, county covers around it. Ours is facilities 45, 65.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Oberdorff.
Move to suspend the second, third reading of ordinance number 2022-44.
Second.
Audience?
Oh, sorry. Is there any comments from the audience on 2022-44?
Nope. Um, all those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare ordinance 2022-44 an emergency measure.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption. Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2022-44. Obendorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Introduction of resolutions. Can I have a motion to read Resolution 2022-17 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-17 is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Emergency Management Agency, EMA, for a hazard mitigation grant and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Council gave me permission last fall to put in for this grant so that we could map and actually evaluate the city's storm sewer system, because we all know that it needs some help. And we were awarded the grant, and so our portion of that would be $14,000, and we would receive $136,000 in order to complete this plan and this evaluation. So, we just need your approval so that we can accept it and fill out the application, or, fill out the actual, um, acceptance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Move to suspend with the second and third readings?
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions about this resolution?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to approve Resolution 2022-17. Echol?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obendorf?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Okay, council remarks. Mr. Toth?
I have nothing.
Mr. Oberdorff?
My thoughts impressed to Mayor McKinnon. I hope he is healing up well and will be back with us in the near future.
Mr. Marquette?
I'm just really impressed with Larry's outfit tonight. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Heben?
How do you follow that? I second Mr. Oberdorff, uh, sending prayers to Mayor McKinnon and also condolences to the family of Leonard Michaels. Uh, that's all.
Thank you.
Nothing for me.
Um, is there a need to have a committee of the whole for September? Seeing none. Move to suspend with the committee of the whole for September?
Uh, second.
All those in favor of suspending the September Committee of the Whole Meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we don't meet the Fourth Monday in August. We already suspended that meeting. I want to thank everyone, uh, from the city who worked extra. For some reason, they started tearing down the building on the weekends, so it was great for everyone who came from wherever they were and, and, uh, helped get that buttoned up and pulled bricks out of the piles and all that good stuff. And I want to thank Mr. Adet for doing what he could to save the sandstone above the doorways. One came down in pretty decent shape, the other one's kind of banged up, but, um, and the words were not saved, correct?
Those fell without even trying to take them. They fell.
Did they?
Thank God they didn't fall while the school was, was there, but it just took a little bit of vibration.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm not surprised more of it didn't just fall with the vibration, but, but I know that's brought a lot of attention in the community, and people have really been interested in it. Last week, I had the opportunity to participate in the International Year of Glass Celebration. The United Nations declared 2022 the International Year of Glass, so I don't know if any of you were able to do the tour of, uh, LOF Pilkington, NSG, but they had that opening, and that was fascinating. It was a lot different than the last time they had it open, which had to be twenty years ago or more. Um, and, uh, it was, it was a cool celebration, and it was fun to be a part of. And I also wish Mayor McKinnon to feel better soon and come back and join us. I'm sure he's bored, but, uh, we miss you, Neil. Audience remarks? Seeing none. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I wanted two cards, not- Did you want two cards?
Um, I think I'm okay with just the one. Okay.
Thank you, though.
Yes, no.